Good afternoon, everyone, to the Communities and Neighbourhoods Transitional Committee. We're meeting here in February and we've got a full set of items on the agenda. I'm going to go through the housekeeping arrangements very quickly. I think everybody knows where the toilets are for comfort breaks. Please feel free to go there. There isn't, we're not expecting a fire alarm practice today, so if it does go off, can we follow the yellow signs, green signs, and meet up in Tudor Square, please? From the Covid point of view, we have sanitising points, and I think that's it. I'm going to go around the members here present. I'll start with myself. I'm councillor Peter Garbutt, and I shall go this way.
I'm councillor Sean Edmire Richards. I'm the deputy chair of this committee and a councillor for Manor and Castle Ward.
I'm councillor Paul Wood. I'm a member of the Cupid Executive.
Councillor Fran Bellbin for Firth Park Ward, substituting for Ben Curran.
Councillor Karen McGowan for Burley Ward.
Councillor Sophie Thornton for Beechfield and Greenall.
Councillor Andrew Sangha, councillor for Forwood Ward.
Councillor Dalton, councillor for Dorant Topley.
Thank you very much. Are there any apologies for absence?
Received apologies for councillor's Ben Curran, Alison Teale and Abdi Sam Mohammed. Councillor Fran Bellbin is here, substituting for councillor Ben Curran.
Thank you very much.
And very nicely too.
Are there any items for which we need to exclude public and press? Are there any declarations of interest from anyone? So we'll go through the minutes. I think we've got two sets to go through, both in November and December. December's a single sheet, that should be very quick, so I'll start with November. Page one, it doesn't say page one at the bottom, but it is. Anyone? Page two? Page three? Page four? Page five? Thank you. Are there any matters arising from that? Councillor Oatman.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, just because of the length and detailed discussion on the new IT system, I would, yeah, members raised a number of issues and concerns with the process. I just wondered whether that's all gone and whether that's now, you know, whether we will hear or whether that's been acted upon. Perhaps we can have, you know, an update of some sort, whether a note by email might be sufficient rather than anything else.
The minutes do say that we're going to get a report back in March, Jo.
Well, the minutes say that we've requested a report back in March. I hope that does mean that we get it.
I think request is just a polite word as for require, isn't it?
Does that satisfy you, Jo? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Can we get that on the agenda for March then? Thank you. And the single sheet for the December meeting, which was a meeting where we decided we weren't going to have this because of the news about the Omicron variant coming through and nobody knowing how strong it was. So I'm just going to say, does everybody agree that that's an accurate sheet describing what happened at that point? Okay. Thanks very much. Do we have any public questions or petitions? So, January 2022 workshop, where we're at page 11. Okay. We held an informal meeting online for this workshop. And what's being asked of us here is to note the contents of the workshop, which is from pages, sorry, 11 to 14. And to consider making a recommendation that the further work referred to on selective licensing is taken forward under the new committee system. Has anybody got anything to add to that or anything that they'd rather go through? I'm not proposing going through it in any great detail because most of us were hearing that. Do we feel that there's anything else we need to add? We spoke about cladding and fire safety, and had a presentation on that. And we had a presentation on regulation in the residential sector. And I think that was a very informative presentation. And then we updated ourselves on what was going on in the working groups, and we've got something coming on further in the agenda, a further update on that. Councillor Richards.
Thanks, you councillor Garbutt. Just, I think, was it yesterday, that the government has made some more announcements on cladding? And I think such that anybody who is in London, who has to pay towards removal of cladding or any of the waking watch stuff, shouldn't be paying more than £15,000 in total for that. And people outside London, it was £10,000, plus I think some support for developers in order to pay for the removal of cladding. Plus, I think there was something also to make sure that developers couldn't set up shell companies, which would suddenly dissolve them of any responsibility for removal of cladding at a later stage. I don't know if anybody else has been reading it. I only read, sort of draft through it, but I thought, Andrew, you might have, because it's sort of something you're very keen about at the moment. Do you know more than me? I've just sort of done the bare bones of it there.
No, Chair, that's about as far as I got. I was too worried by troop movements on the Russian-Ukraine border to spend sufficient time thinking about cladding. But yes, the government's clearly moved away from its position of two months ago where they were only interested in above 18 metres. And, you know, there's now this package in terms of 11 to 18 metres, so that is at least progress. And as you say, there's another announcement yesterday in terms of waiting watch, and we still have some, we still have various places in Sheffield where there is a waiting watch. So it is, remains, you know, of urgent action in this city, but it's not just the council that needs to make progress on this.
Chair, would it be possible for us to ask for some sort of briefing report, perhaps to all councillors anyway? Because it's something, I think, that affects quite a lot of wards, not just those with a student population, so that we can see, it would be good to know whether the warm words in the report look likely to give us solid action in Sheffield.
I certainly think that would be a well worthwhile thing to do, so I think we'll see if we can get that on the agenda. Yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll speak to Janet Sharp and make sure that we get a briefing on that.
Paul?
Just so everyone's aware, we have already had two substantial plans towards the major working module. We have it going on in the city. I'll get you these figures and details and get them circulated to everyone.
Thank you very much, councillor. That would be really helpful. Has anyone got anything else to add on that? Councillor Oatman.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I mean, I'm just going back to the request on page 11, we've been asked to make a recommendation about selective licensing. If we're ready to come on to that. I'm slightly puzzled because there isn't a kind of detailed wording of that recommendation in the report itself. So I guess all the wording we have is the wording on page 11. And I just, I would like a little bit more information, particularly, I mean, given that it's only February and the committee system won't exist until May, why in particular it's something to refer to a committee that exists in May rather than to the executive member who is right before us today?
I think it's at the bottom of page 12, isn't it, councillor Oatman? The last bullet point.
Yes, thank you. I realise that there are references in the notes of the discussion on selective licensing, but it didn't read as a wording that could be agreed as a recommendation. So, but yeah, no, I accept those points of note.
It's also the top bullet point on page 13, where it talks about a detailed session for the committee. Once the officers had refreshed the cost information, they were suggesting that you could have a detailed session. And it was my, apologies, it was my suggestion that it be forwarded to the new committee system because I knew that there was only, at that point, there was only one more, after today, there was only one more detailed session of this committee due to be held. So, but I think we're going to discuss that under the work programme item. So yeah, that could be brought forward. If members want to bring that forward, then that's not a problem.
So, well, I mean, if what you're saying is that the officers are still working on kind of the evidence for a further discussion on selective licensing, and therefore the timescale of looking at it after May fits in with that piece of work the officers are doing, then I'm quite happy with it. I mean, on the other hand, if it could be looked at sooner, I mean, given the executive members right here, if you, I don't know if councillor Wood, if you want to make a comment on this, otherwise I'm quite happy to drop it, I would say, but I just don't want this to be delayed three months unnecessarily, and if it sounds like it's not going to be, then I'm happy.
Councillor Wood?
The amount of work on it is, the legs it rises, his scheme is massive. There's no way it could be done before the May elections.
Councillor Sangha?
I think, Chair, I mean, I hear what councillor Wood has said. I mean, I mean, it was a very useful workshop, but I think the questions that those of us, those of us who had, we had some good questions and clearly lots has happened in Page Hall in terms of learning the lessons. And clearly the London Road scheme was quite a different sort of scheme to Page Hall. The officers' view at the time was there wasn't much more capacity. But I do think, you know, and I hear what councillor Wood said, but I do think that the new committee in May needs to get a grip in terms of having a strategy of how we use selective licensing and what the role is. And it needs to be owned by more than just, you know, the cabinet member, which feels it's been the cabinet member and the councillors who've covered, the Burgree councillors, who've covered Page Hall. You know, other councils have taken a different view of how to use selective licensing, and I think we, you know, the committee need to take a decision about how we use selective licensing over the next two or three years. And it's something which I think we were expecting this transition committee to be able to, you know, have an understanding of. And I think what's happened over the past six months is we've had briefings and we've learnt a bit, but we've not actually taken the decision. So, you know, I think we move it on to the agenda for May, for the new committee. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wood?
I agree entirely with councillor Sangha, that it needs to be before the committee. And Bob, it needs to be the new committee after May.
I think that's also going to be coming up in the work plan, is it not, yes? Okay, so we will address that later on in the meeting. Sorry, councillor Richards.
I was just going to ask councillor Bellbin, who has done lots of work around Page Hall and things, whether you have an idea of how you felt it went, just because you were living and working around there.
I don't think I've got enough background on it, to be honest, to be able to comment usefully on it.
Okay, thank you. That's some very useful comments there, and we will take that further on because it's something that we need to get a hold of and get a grasp on.
Sorry, Chair, is that your summarising of the mood of the meeting, that we are agreeing to make the recommendation that would be being asked to consider on page 11?
I think that's what I'm, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are we okay with that? Yes. Let's move on then. Right. Item eight on the agenda is a verbal report from the policy officer, issues referred to from local area committees.
Apologies, Chair, I was just losing where we were on the agenda. I've not received any information from any of the area committees in terms of information that they wanted to share with this committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, Chair.
Chair, if I may, thank you. Sorry to indulge on a process issue. I mean, I had a discussion with South West officers this morning, and they were, seemed to be of the view that the thing to do was that LACs to feed into LAC chairs, and LAC chairs, if they agreed that something should be taken up, would then feed it to the relevant committee. And if that's the case, then I'm not surprised if you've not had anything direct. Obviously, also, we're still kind of working on the local area plan, so obviously I think business will come out of that, that we might want this committee or successor to consider. So, yeah, I just wanted to make that observation, really. I mean, let's not imagine there's nothing coming through because you've not had anything directly. There certainly are things in South West that we want this committee and others to consider, and I'm sure the same is true of the other LACs.
Thank you, councillor Oatman. I think I'd like to make clear that the process for passing items from LAC to committees and from committees to LAC is under consideration by the governance committee, which is a meeting that councillor Richards and I have just come from. And that is one of the items that caused quite a bit of upset, shall we say, certainly disagreement at our last meeting, not at this meeting, or it might have happened because I missed about half an hour of it. So I note what you said, and I personally, speaking from the South Light point of view, I'm also aware that there are items that could easily be passed on to either this or some other committee, but the process by which that is done has not yet been agreed. So we'll follow that with some interest. That will be set within the next two months. Councillor Richards.
I would be very disappointed if it had to go through the LAC chairs meeting. I know it's an informal meeting, but it will be part of the structure, I believe, sort of a dotted line rather than a straight line meeting, if you like. But I don't think that ought to be able to preclude any LAC sending anything in. If they have to send it to the chairs meeting, and if the chairs meeting said, we don't think this is important, despite the chair of that particular LAC jumping on down saying it's dead important in our area, then that ought to be able to go to any committee. I think it was just the idea for it going to, if you like, the chairs meeting was just so that people were aware of it. It wasn't actually to be able to stop it. It was, it was just to say, oh, right, we know about that. Also, they could say, oh, gosh, yes, that's a real issue in our area, add our voice to it, rather than it being a blocking mechanism or a slowing mechanism. That was my understanding.
Councillor Sangha?
Yes, Chair, and clearly there is a concern that there's not 84 councils, there's only 24 councils, because the same 24 councils seem to be feeding back from various committees. But just in terms of LAC chairs this morning, yeah, at no point in the new, in the new, in the new structure is LAC chairs going to be a place where formal decisions are taken. It's not a, it's not a place where we take decisions in whether a committee can or an area committee can, or a planning committee, or the full council. So, you know, LAC chairs is a useful forum, but that's its role. What was agreed this morning was that Alex Polak would go to each of the next LAC public meetings and present how the, how the new committee system would work to the public attending the seven LAC meetings. But that would be no more than 20 minutes on each of those seven meetings in March. But that was agreed. Exactly what he's going to say, I don't know, because that was dependent on the meeting you've just come out of. So, I mean, so there is at least a linkage, and we do know what each other are doing. And the full council will make a decision in terms of the new structure. But as I understand it, the feedback we gave before, from a previous meeting of LAC chairs, was that the line between LACs and committees wouldn't be to a committee like this transition committee, but would be to whichever was the appropriate committee. So LACs can feed to whichever is the appropriate committee for each item, and as councillor Richards has correctly said, it does not need to go through the LAC chairs. So I think that's where we're up to, Chair.
That's my understanding as well, but I'm going to have to correct or disappoint you in the sense that I don't think we'll have a full agreement on the full structure by the time of the next public meetings of the LAC. So we may be able to update you on what we, where we are so far, but that's about it. It's almost there, but there are still some stumbling blocks to overcome. So we'll take that as it comes. Does anyone? Are there any other comments on that?
Well, if you insist, Chair. I mean, I'm intrigued and baffled by this latest exchange. I didn't expect it to kick off. I mean, intrigued that there was this dispute. I agree entirely with councillor Richard's comments on how it ought to work. I'm also baffled that this item is on the agenda if the procedure for how it's supposed to happen hasn't been agreed. But there you go.
Okay, well, there is a governance meeting on the 22nd of February, where by then councillor Alston and I will have talked to each other, because at the last meeting, it was either me proposing and her seconding or vice versa. It was actually all quite amicable, I would say. It's, so, you know, yes, there may be some more stuff to sort out, but we are doing it in a very civilised and courteous way. You'll be pleased to know, Jo.
Could I just clarify, Chair? The reason why that is on the agenda is because this committee requested it was a standing item on the agenda every meeting, but unfortunately, the mechanism for ensuring that it's utilised hasn't been agreed.
The joys of changing systems. Okay, so where are we going next? Right, the schedule of forthcoming executive decisions. Have we had a chance to have a look at this? It's fairly important, I'm not sure it is. Let's have a look. Brownfield Housing Fund, grant funding, is that something that we need to look at?
I think page 18 is more exciting.
Exciting. Page 18, private sector leasing scheme.
Chair, if I may, I mean, yes, the item on page 18 jumped out to me as well. I mean, like I said, I think this item is on the agenda, because I said at a previous meeting, the bread and butter of this committee should be considering in advance items that will go to the executive member, or now items that will go later to the successor committee. I don't know if councillor Wood would like to advise us on whether this is an interesting item, whether there would be much for us to consider in terms of what options there are in terms of setting this up. Obviously, it's a vitally important service.
I'm in favour, Jo, of looking at anything that members here feel should be looked at. A lot of these decisions will ever come before we get into next year's committees. But I do think we need to jam along all of the executive decisions. I understand there's all going on with that through the governance committee at the moment, but I haven't seen any finalised plans on that yet.
Can I just, I find it interesting that this piece, sorry, on page 16, which was the bit that you thought was more interesting, Chair, and it's Janet Sharp and its place, but on rough sleepers and supporting private sector leasing and looking after our rough sleepers, it's people services, where I would have expected that to have come under place as well. It does feel a bit disjointed, doesn't it, as to why that isn't also deemed to be a housing issue as well?
I believe there's a scope to look at the whole system of this really, between rough sleeping and asylum, it's split across too many portfolios at the moment. But a lot of this comes under Alison, and then I have parts of it come under myself. It should all be under one person. Alison and I have said this continuously for a year now. It gets very confusing both for others as well as for elected members. And I think it is well worth reviewing how we deal with those issues and coming up with a new plan that places it under one committee in the future. As it stands at the moment, it's a risk to be split across a number of committees and in common a number of cooperative members because it's major problems.
Maybe we could make that recommendation, that we combine these issues under one directorship. What do people feel about that?
I mean, Chair, I didn't manage entirely to follow what councillor Wood was saying, unfortunately, but I do understand that these, I do feel that the portfolio of, well, obviously this portfolio of housing would be under, but sustainable neighbourhoods, wellbeing, parks and leisure is one of the places where people touch place or place touches people. And it is, you know, wherever you draw the lines, you're going to have kind of these crossover elements to the portfolios. And so I do, I think if we view rough sleeping and the complex needs associated with that as a people problem rather than a place problem, as opposed to kind of shortage of housing supply, which is a place problem, I do think it kind of makes sense for this to be a people, for a people issue. But, you know, wherever you draw the line, you're going to have these kinds of issues. I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel confident in making recommendations to change it on the basis of information we have today.
Are there any other comments or?
I suppose it does say in bold, doesn't it, that we propose that we're going to set up a private sector leasing scheme, which is property.
Councillor Bellbin?
I'd have to agree that this comes under people, really, and it's purely to do with the complexity of the needs of rough sleepers, really. Housing is just one of those needs, as I think the councillor over there has previously said. I wonder, although this sounds like a lovely scheme, unless it is supported by a whole lot of other skills, just a... lot of other skills, just a home alone is not the solution, unfortunately, around rough sleeping. It's going to be substance misuse issues, there are going to be mental health issues, there are going to be a whole massive raft of issues associated with each of those individual rough sleepers. So, and one tenant support officer may not be the solution either.
Thank you, councillor Bellbin. Am I right in thinking that this committee does not feel that it's a good idea to combine those portfolios? Yeah, okay. Will, do we, do we need to look at this any further? Do we want to take this on as, uh, something that we want to look at in our March meeting, maybe?
Just going to ask, when is the decision going to be made on this? Just because it would be good to know that it has actually happened and what the support programme is for it afterwards, because these are the sorts of things that committees are now going to be looking at, aren't they, rather than just the cabinet member? It's, it's another thing you'd want to say to a future committee, keep a watching brief on this. Is this what we're going to be recommending from now on, do you think?
Again, this will be something we come to.
Yeah, can I agree with councillor Richard? I think we certainly want to keep a watching brief on this, on this committee, whether that means bringing it to the next meeting or not. I, I'll be happy to, you know, for, for, for Chair, Deputy Chair to decide that in consultation with relevant officers. And we certainly just want, we, we certainly wanted to, um, show our support for, I think, initiative like this, and if it means getting early consideration in place, if that helps, I certainly, I think we should do that. So I don't want, you know, rather than mandating it from this committee, even if it might not be useful, I think I'd certainly support it in that, in that, in that way, if that's clear.
Yeah, that's clear enough. Does anybody else have an opinion on this or to voice an opinion? I feel that it is a good scheme and it is only part of the solution, as councillor Bellbin has said, but as, as a part of the solution, it's a good scheme. Um, I wonder if there's anything else in place around it to address the other problems councillor Bellbin, uh, voiced, you know, the substance abuse and, um, mental health support, et cetera. Does anybody, do you have any ideas on that one?
What I was going to suggest, Chair, is if you want, I could contact the lead officer, Jessica, and speak to her about the time, timeframe for this. So, you know, at what point is the decision is going to be brought forward? Because it does say date documents available to be confirmed, so I can, I can try and confirm the timescale and, and if it would be useful and, um, manageable within the timeframe, I could ask her to come and talk to the committee about some of those issues.
Personally, I think that would be quite helpful, and I think it's something that we need to have a look at. It does fall within our remit, very firmly within it, so I think it, it's something we definitely want to have a look at. Has anybody else got an opinion on that? Shall, shall we do that then? Thank you. Do we want to have a look at anything else on the, um, on this particular point, the exec decisions? Sorry, councillor McGowan?
Yeah, it's just on page 45, and it's about the older person's independent living scheme, and it's not for now. I know we've got quite a few new schemes, and it's the first time that we've had anything built for a long, long time, and they're different to what we've got. I just know I was involved in what was the shelter, I was in board, and I'm having a scheme built in my ward, hopefully within the next year. But they're, they're having community rooms built in and cafes, and they're going to be part, more part of the community than just having people living independently in a building. And I just thought it might be something for the future for, um, you know, for people to go and have a look at these new schemes and see how they've changed, because I think it's got 20 years plus since we've had a new scheme built within Sheffield.
Yes, thank you, councillor McGowan, that's, that's a good point. Councillor Wood?
The first one to come into operation would be the one of Parsons Cross and Alavinda. Any members of the committee who'd like to go visit is to range as soon as we get the opening days.
You're probably eligible for it, aren't I?
I wasn't going to say that, but I'm.
But you were thinking it, okay.
But that's a very, very kind offer, and I, I for one would take you up on that if that, if that came. Do we, do we have a, a rough idea of when the opening date will be at the moment?
The estimate is a band of five to six months from now. It should be fully functioning, but I'm not sure, I haven't done an update for the last month on it, so I'll get that to lay in, Chair.
Thanks very much indeed, councillor. Councillor Richards?
But on page 42, it just says about increasing the pitch fee for our Gypsy and Traveller sites. I just wanted to know, do we, do those just go up with inflation each year? Or is something else done specifically for improving the sites or anything like that?
Councillor Wood?
There's an invasion, we've got settings in there.
Thank you. Any other issues there?
On page 47, when it says that, um, Bowlhill View Older Person's Residential Home, which was considered to be surplus to requirements, is now going to be passed over for housing. Do we know what sort of housing, whether it's proposed to, because we've been talking, haven't we, about the need for some residential places for, for young people? Is it something that would be able to be, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Thank you. Not, I was going to say transmogrified, could be adapted in that way, or is it going to be used for some different way as form of housing?
There's approximately 20 sites being looked at for various uses. I'll try and give you a briefing of what each of them is, is, is proposed.
Thank you. Have we got anything else on there that requires our attention? Don't think I can see anything else on there, so if nobody else has spotted anything, thank you very much for your, uh, comments on that, and we'll take forward the points that were raised there. That brings us on to the work plan and the ways of working, final item on the agenda. And this is a report from our Policy Improvement Officer.
Thank you, Chair. It's a standard report that I bring every time, um, and, uh, as you can see, the reminder there that we have, um, three working groups, um, that have been in operation. I know that the one, our Working Group One on Young People and Antisocial Behaviour, the plan was to go out with, um, uh, some, uh, some youth workers to, to speak to young people, so did you want to come in, Karen?
Yeah, I did a visit last Thursday with Peter. Really, really interesting. I did a brief report back, um, for you. It was very brief. Um, I think the aim around it was, it's very easy in a meeting to say, um, oh, we engage with young people, we go out when there's a bit of antisocial behaviour, or we find a group of young people and engage. And in my head, I was, I thinking, well, how do you engage if they don't want to engage with you? And, and how does that take place and what do you do? So that was the idea behind it. And so we went out and, as it turned out to be very useful, the, we found some youths kicking a ball around on some, uh, between two blocks of flats, well, three, it was in like a horseshoe. And it was interesting watching Chelsea engage with them and how she did it. I think for me, what came out of it as well was, um, the psychology and everything behind youth work and, and body language and all, how they read all of that, and that's why there's a qualification in it, you know, knowing when to back off and what, and, and how to change the terms. So she said things to them like, um, I'm making you feel uncomfortable, aren't I? And, you know, and direct questions, acknowledging how they were feeling and asking them to come and stand under the streetlight so that they weren't all in darkness and things. So it was really, really interesting and how they, they were really not wanting to engage at first and how they did in the end. And she was saying, if I had a magic wand, what is it that you would want? Um, and all they wanted were some football goals on this, which would actually be a big help because the ball was hitting the fencing, uh, which then is a problem for the people living in the flats, so just things like that. Uh, we also ended up talking to a resident, um, who was, you know, uh, really interested in what we were doing. Uh, so yeah, it was a really interesting visit. For, for me personally, I, I got a lot out of it to just see how that works, now she changed her tone depending on what she was getting from them or not getting from them, and all that skill around that. Um, and it's resulted in her now identifying, we've, we've got no youth provision as in a youth club or in a community centre or anything in Burley Ward. Uh, she's going to get some, the youth workers now to engage with those young people that support our ward and to try and get some activities up with them, um, and gain that trust from them. Because she spoke to about three, but I think there were some older youths that were hanging around in the flats as well, so I think it was a good piece of work. Yes?
Thank you, councillor McGowan. I've, um, uh, written a little bit extra. Did you see the bit I'd written? Okay, so, um, I was impressed, I was really impressed with Chelsea Renahan's knowledge, her enthusiasm, her energy, my goodness, her energy, and her honesty. Um, you know, she was quite upfront about the fact that the youth service was not in a good place at the moment, um, but she was confident she would be able to get it into a good place. So I think that one of the things we need to do, uh, as a committee, is to pass on to our successor committee, uh, the idea that the youth service needs a regular report, needs to be reporting regularly to, to, to our successor committee. I think that's a, an absolutely vital thing. Otherwise, we lose a lot of, uh, a lot of the progress that's being made, and if we lose that, we lose the youth, and if we do that, then, you know, it's, it's, we're not in a good place. I also invited her to do a tour of Mount Pleasant Park, which falls within my ward, and I think the issues in Mount Pleasant Park are probably very different from the issues in Burley Ward. They amount to drug dealing, gangs, knife crime, child criminal exploitation, uh, which also leads on to child sexual exploitation. So she acknowledged that was a very different, uh, way of dealing with things, and we did agree that we would set up a meeting. We haven't yet, but we will, will do, and I will report back from there once we've done that particular, uh, tour of Mount Pleasant Park to see how she feels that she can, that the youth service can, uh, usefully engage there. I also put her in touch with the SHARO NAG, um, which is the group looking at, uh, problem places within the area and problem people within the area. And, uh, she already has an officer on that committee, uh, but she will liaise with that officer and, uh, we'll see how that takes us from there. Like I say, I was really, really impressed, and it was a very, very useful, uh, um, walk around, well, it was a drive around, uh, which was lucky because it was cold and wet. But yes, a very useful visit to, uh, to see Burley itself, but also to see how Chelsea felt about it and how she was able to, to do the, the work that she said she could do. Councillor McGowan?
I was just going to add on the, you know, I know youth, it, it is about the neighbourhood and how we, how it, it's just part of it, isn't it? And, and how she's not just working with youth, she was happy to talk to the residents and get them on board, and she said it's a trust thing, and it's an area that us as councillors are trying to lift as well. So all of this together makes it a better neighbourhood, is just what I was trying to add.
I was quite amused that after we had that, um, that meeting with the resident, who was very well informed about the area and very interested in what we were doing, uh, and after she left, she said to us, I'll get her on, isn't it, as a volunteer? So she's, um, she's already got that, that in hand, I think, so very impressed altogether. But like I say, the youth service isn't in a good place at the moment, and I think we do need to keep an eye on that. Thanks.
Chair, I just wanted to add to that, um, with the comment about the youth service. I know that from my colleagues, that the Children and Young Peoples Scrutiny Committee are hoping to do some work on the youth service before scrutiny committees disappear at the end of, of this year. So, um, if, if members want, I know that, um, you've suggested that we, um, make a recommendation that this is looked at under the new committee system. Um, you, I can also share that recommendation with the scrutiny committee.
And again, I think that would be a very useful thing to, to do, and I think it would show that, um, this committee has been working, uh, and I think it would pass on our feelings in that sort of legacy kind of way. Yes, thanks.
Thanks, Chair. And so I'll finish the report. Um, the second working group was on post-Christmas date.
This is councillor Joe Watten and I, he's riding shotgun for me there. We have, we've, we've talked, discussed it, obviously it's very post-Christmas now. I've spoken to Jackie Halliwell from the Credit Union, the Sheffield Credit Union, and, we're going to arrange a Zoom, any members who want to come to it. It'll either be Zoom or Microsoft Teams, um, and it's going to be at the end of the month because she's solidly booked till then. So I will send an email around, if anybody wants to come, they can, and obviously if you're doing other pieces of work, that's fine, but I think it's important because the way the credit union works now has changed, and I think it's important that we know that it's easier for people to access it and to use it than it previously was. So I think that's information we need and then also to get out to our colleagues. I've also contacted Mike McNautry from the National Loan Sharks, um, campaign, and I'm still waiting to hear back from him. But again, I hope that we'll be able to do some sort of Zoom meeting with him about the Sheffield scene, about which he is very knowledgeable. And finally, um, I know that the food bank in my ward, which covers obviously more wards than Manor, the S2 Food Bank, is now getting 10 more referrals a week than it was before Christmas, which is very alarming. And so Joe and I talked about this, and we thought every ward is actually probably got a food bank, and, you know, not, not just Manor or Burngrieve or Firth Park, but, you know, Fullwood and also Doran Totley. So what we wanted to do was ask every member of this committee if you would just talk to your local food bank and find out the situation and come back to us with it, even if it's just say, we've, yes, we've got more referrals, or yes, we're getting more people giving to us, or what else is happening. I know that, for instance, the S2 Food Bank also has, um, a service level agreement with the, um, CAB, whatever it's called these days, I'm not quite sure, whereby one day a week, a, um, a member of whereby one day a week, a, a member of staff from CAB comes to do in face, in person, face-to-face debt advice, because that is, and that is part and parcel of using the C, the food bank is that you will also get debt advice to help you to, to move on and not be dependent on it, to find out what the problems are. We clearly, we know there are big issues about the fall in, sorry, I'm going brain dead, the benefit, Universal Credit, sorry. We know about that. We also know that if it doesn't get at least a seven and a half percent rise in April, then people are going to be falling even further back. That apparently with the rate of inflation and the cost of living going up particularly around fuel, but also about food prices. I know that I've noticed that my food bill's just five p here and there on everything is really mounting up. And people who are dependent on Universal Credit will find themselves £500 a year worse off unless we get a really big rise for them. And this is across the city. We know that there are people in work who are also having benefits. So I think this is, you know, we need to really get, get on board with this and look after people because we know that this is going to be a grim year for, for a lot of the people of Sheffield. So that's what we're proposing. So we hope you'll all agree to go and talk to your local food bank. Thank you. And I'll include officers in that if you get a chance because it will be useful to have snapshots from different places.
Thank you. The final working group is the Repairs and Maintenance one.
Yeah, so the repairs situation that we have at the minute is something that's clearly worsening with winter and a lot of Covid vacancies, Covid-related absences even. I know that the backlog, backlog has increased to about 12,000 now. I'm having residents contacting me who've been out without heating and hot water for, you know, up to eight days, which is really quite worrying and worrying across the board. I know, Deborah, that we need to arrange another meeting. We were, I've spoken to a few residents that have been, you know, without heating and hot water, that have been in touch with me. And once we've got that resolved, they are wanting to come and talk to the, to the working group and, and share their experiences. And I think that that would be something that we could, that would be really, really grateful. I'd be interested, obviously Paula's not with us at the minute. But certainly from a resident's perspective, the key thing that comes back to me every time, and I know that's not under our remit as a working group, is they're not able to get through to speak to anyone. I know there is work ongoing about the call centre and stuff, but I would be interested to hear, once Paul's back in the room, what's going on with that and to get an update on that really, just to see how we can resolve that going forward and anything we can do. But yeah, that's certainly from a resident's perspective, they can't, you know, people are waiting hours on the phone to be able to speak to anyone. Which is, you know, we, we obviously know where a lot of the backlog is. But certainly if a lot of residents aren't able to speak to anyone, there's probably a lot more people out there waiting until we can get to that point. So. Karen.
I just wondered if we could find out also the role of the Neighbourhood Officer Housing Plus? Because the whole idea of those people were to be visiting tenants. And I know we've been in Covid and I know they've had lockdown, but how do, how do residents, you know, how do they fit in to helping residents get things resolved? I know that they were looking at, you know, tenancies and, and things like that. But I just think there's something about that linkage, that is a person that's supposed to have a relationship with that family and that home. So where does it stop? Where does it start? And, and can we see if they can help with these issues as well?
That was something that we raised in our first meeting, is the relationship between housing and repairs as well generally. Because there are a lot of times where residents feel like they have reported their concerns and that has somehow not been relayed back to Repairs and Maintenance or vice versa. So there is a relationship issue. And I think that's just a sort of reporting mechanism that we need to improve and firm up really, to make sure that people who feel like they have actually reported on time, time again, when they've had their housing officer or neighbourhood officer around their issues and then repairs and maintenance haven't actually received it. So that is something that we need to look at, yeah, definitely.
Councillor Richards.
Sorry about this. There is, it is, sorry, the Housing Repairs Service is having a peer review at the moment with APSY, the organisation for, it used to be direct labour organisations in the olden days. I think it's now called Public Services. I don't know if you've managed to make contact with them and to talk to them, because I think that would be very useful. And the other thing is that yesterday I had a meeting with a member of the Housing Repairs Force for two hours and picked up the frustrations from that side. I, I think there's, there is a huge willingness and appetite on behalf of the workforce to get this right because they don't want to be part of a service that doesn't work either. So I, I think speaking to APSY and also perhaps talking to the workforce as well as tenants. I know we're here representing people, but it's useful, I think, to get ideas from both sides.
No, definitely. And that's something that we, we talked about as well in our meeting, that we need to hear from all sides as to what's going on here. I was just saying, as an update, that's something that I was, I have been doing and that's something that I would like to get in the diary soon as well with Deborah. But certainly, as I say, and that's not me saying that we're not going to be talking to workforce at all, it's just something that I did not mention at that point. But yes, it's, as you say, APSY, the APSY review is something that is really welcome and it'll be interesting to see what that comes out with. Obviously that's been something that we've been wanting and a review of the service is something we've been wanting for a while. So it'd be good to see and I'm glad to see that that's moved forward. As I say, there's been lots of things that have been said that are happening and changing and that's great. But there are residents that are still struggling to get through and waiting for days. So that's how that's feeding through down on the ground is something that I'm interested to see. Why, why is that not benefiting yet?
It would be useful for you to influence the APSY review.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Thank you.
Councillor Otten.
Thank you, Chair. I was just, I welcome the APSY review as, as councillor Richards mentioned. I noticed that this happened and also had, I understand, an executive officer decision not so long ago to, to contract with a number of independent contractors to do work on, you know, to, to, to come in and do some of the work to bring down the backlog. Both, I think, said that, that, that some of us would take the view of being needed for quite some time. And it's, so it's good that they're, they're happening. I'm just wondering if anybody in this room knows, within the kind of the arcane processes deep in the machinery of the council, whether, whether these things are happening because this committee has taken such an interest in, in, in housing repairs and because we have the councillor Thornton's working group. We've, we've, we could all take some credit in having, having provoked at last some, some, some action on this. Or whether it's just, you know, things that have happened independently eventually anyway. I don't know if anybody knows.
I think it was actually the chief executive who said that she saw it as a priority because having seen the volume of complaints and also, you know, huge concerns in making sure that it worked. So it, it was her initiative certainly.
And I think that maybe the way that you yourself have highlighted the problem has brought that to her attention. So I think you can take some of that, that credit. One of the things I was going to say, you were going to, you were talking about the reporting system itself. I believe that the, it's our, that our council transitional committee are dealing with that. And I sat in on one of their meetings where they had a report on that. So I don't know if you've been able to liaise with any people from the, our council transitional group, but that, that might be a way forward as well because it's something that they, I know were wanting to keep an eye on.
Definitely. It'd be good to get my eyes on that. If you could just send that over to me, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Councillor Garbutt.
I'll just complete the report then. There were just a couple of other things that I wanted to suggest and, and mention to committee members. It's been mentioned in this meeting that without decision-making powers, you've, you've kind of been briefed on a number of issues in the last six months. You've gathered some really important information. And you've also along the way been making various recommendations. And I discussed with the Chair and the Vice Chair the possibility of trying to pull this together into a final report for this committee. So that the, the recommendations that you've been able to pull together, that particularly are ones that can't be implemented immediately, but would probably feed into the work of the committees next year, could be captured and, and then obviously that, that report sent to the relevant committees when they're finalised under the new structure. So I'm planning on trying to pull that together so that it's in a draft form for the next meeting. So members can see that. And obviously if there's any particular things that they, you think need to be included in that from your own recollection of meetings, then by all means let me know and I'll, I'll include them in it. There is also plan, there are also plans for, well, there's been a request from officers who led on a posit, on a poverty, can't get my words out, on a poverty scrutiny review last year. They want to bring the final report to this committee. So hopefully that will be ready for the March agenda as well. And given that the working groups will all be concluding around that time, it was suggested by the Chair and Vice Chair that maybe we should have another meeting scheduled in April.
I know the, the April date is a little bit sort of, ooh, because it falls within further. But I see no reason why, why this shouldn't be at all possible. We, we may have more business that we can handle in March. And it would be a really good way of making sure that our concerns and the issues that we've spoken about in this six months are put into that final report and, and passed on in April. So that the May, June, July, whenever the first meeting of the next committees, the successor committees are, will have those in a very formal way and make sure that our recommendations are at least brought to their attention. Does anybody have any particular objection to meeting in April?
Chair, I'm not convinced. I must say that, that the problem with this committee is that it, it is a, a talking shop and it doesn't have powers to make any decisions. And therefore, you know, the place I'd like to bring our conclusions to is, is in fact the first meeting of a successor committee that can, can do something about it. So I, mine seemed to be not to have an additional meeting in April, but to, to do the, do the job you, you know, you describe at a, in a, in a successor committee. They could make decisions on it. That'd be my view.
Councillor Thacker.
I mean, we've not had a normal April for a long time. I mean, I mean, last, last year, we were still in Covid. In 2020, we were at the first lockdown, we were absolutely locked down, having no meetings whatsoever. So one has to go back to 2019 and 2018. But the current director of legal governance was very clear that we couldn't have council meetings in April that took any decisions. So I just remember from the scrutiny agendas that we had in 2018, 2019, we all had items that were coming to April meetings that all got cancelled. So as we're councillor offices, I, I'm not sure of the, of the value of, of an April meeting. The guidance from the council officers has been very clear that we shouldn't, that we should only be meeting if absolutely necessary in, in, in April.
Thank you. Could we clarify that with the legal people, see if there's any particular reason why we can or can't? And we'll, we'll let you know what the result of that inquiry is. Right. Have we finished, Deborah? Yes? Yeah, okay. So our next meeting will be held on the 15th of March, 3.30 in here. And unless anybody has any other business. Nope. Okay. In that case, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much.